I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for March 25, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the Live tab, and then on the 2025.03.25 City Council Meeting. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Rini?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Oleskowicz?
Here.
Shade?
Hasn't.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Please rise for a moment of silence, as tonight we pay tribute to the Cantoni family, who tragically lost their four-year-old daughter in a fire that passed about two weeks ago. And the fire also severely injured two other family members. End the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need a motion to approve the January 21st, 2025 special city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the February 25th, 2025 city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. One abstention. Opposed? Hearing the visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask of all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Hey, everyone. Josh Valiers, Geeky Now, Paul Street. Lift it up. Got it. Right off. You got it. I wanted to speak tonight in support of the resolution brought through the city council docket. After the rhetoric that's poured out recently regarding transgender rights in life, after the bomb threat over the weekend at one of Berkshire County's own queer and transgender-founded businesses, after the disgusting endorsement of that intimidation tactic by a vocal minority in our community who encouraged the domestic terror threat, my personal thought is enough is enough with this tired narrative encouraging violence. We have many in our community that are transgender. We have many in our community who are gender nonconforming. We have many in our community who are sick of living in fear because they have a different way of living that doesn't conform to the standards of other people. What happened to live and let live? I'm in support of this resolution for the friends and family that I have in North Adams that get stared down with eyes of hate and verbally harassed regularly because of who they outwardly are. I feel so an endorsement from the city council reaffirming that we do not tolerate bigotry in our city, and that we'll stand up for those of our community who are among the most vulnerable. I think that would be an appropriate course of action for those who feel emboldened to antagonize others because they're different. I have my own personal feelings on resolutions, and I recognize that voting yes accomplishes little more than words of endorsement, but I think that endorsement can go a long way. We don't punch down in North Adams, and we will not aid in the people that do. And I feel like we need to make the statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record. There's a mic over here, and then there's a mic over here. Yep. Either one?
This mic works.
You can use that mic, yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Hello? Do I have to turn this on?
Okay.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, speak as loud as you can in the room, okay?
Hello, everybody. My name is Leo Scobal, and I am grateful to speak to you tonight on behalf of myself and other transgender North Adams residents. I urge you to pass this resolution as an act of solidarity, not only with the transgender community, but with North Adams itself as a whole. We are your friends, your neighbors, your teachers, just people you pass every day on the street. The federal government seeks to divide and conquer with all these budget cuts, and as Josh said earlier, we have threats coming from our own communities. This resolution is specifically a pledge to protect the transgender community, but it would pave the way for the city to resolve to protect anyone else who is being targeted by this administration. The only way we can resist is by reaching out to each other and uplifting each other. All we have is our community, so let's make it as strong as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to step up to the mic.
Point of order.
Counselor.
It might be good if there's multiple people down there. People just start lining up. That way, it's they're ready to go.
Okay, yeah. If you want to speak, line up at the mic. I'll find you when your turn comes up. Okay. Go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Epiphany Thomas of Ashland Street. I am speaking in support of making North Adams a sanctuary city for transgender diverse people. I am friends with several trans people. They are wonderful, beautiful people, and it disgusts me to see how so many people just disregard their humanity. They are people just like you and me. And to love them is to see how much fear that they're in for their lives, for their safety, a fear that is not deserved. This weekend, a bomb threat happened at Mondo Berkshers, a queer-owned club here in Pittsfield. Just words fail me at the horror. And what could have gone wrong in what was a night of beauty and celebration, the drag story hour? And what should have been a joyous night of celebration and community turned into one that was traumatic. And while I'm thankful that everybody left unharmed, and I'm thankful that everybody's safe, I recognize that we have a long way to go here in the Berkshers. And I think this step is an important step toward making trans people and members of the LGBT community safe. So protect trans people. No kings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Name and address for the record.
Skylar Brooks, West Main Street. I'm speaking tonight in support of the resolution to make North Adams a sanctuary city for transgender people. I am transgender. I was born in the city. I've lived here most of my life, and I would love to see the city council make a resolution. A statement can be powerful. It can ripple through a community. We need to strengthen our community and protect the most vulnerable people from targeted attacks from this current administration. I believe that everyone is owed a life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that includes transgender people. I hope today that a resolution will be passed, making North Adams, making my city a sanctuary city for people like me and all that have been targeted by this current administration. I hope to be able to wake up tomorrow proud of my city. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Poppins, white. Name and address for the record.
My name is Theo Dimon. I live on Notch Road. So I'm here to speak in support of North Adams joining several other Massachusetts cities in becoming a sanctuary.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
I'm here to support North Adams joining several other Massachusetts cities in becoming a trans sanctuary city. There are currently more than 700 bills across this nation at the state and federal level that are targeting trans and gender diverse individuals, their families, and anyone who does not conform to a white supremacist ideal of existence. In 2020, the Williams Institute found that LGBT people are four times more likely to experience violence than non-LGBT people. In 2023, the FBI found that almost a quarter of all hate crimes that year were against the LGBTQ+ community. The majority of the targets of these crimes are black trans women. And as anti-trans policies are passed across this country, those who wish to harm trans people and their communities are legitimized. Every November, on Trans Day of Remembrance, I sit in a room of queer people, and we read off a list of the dead from the prior year, and every year that list gets longer. Our communities deserve safety, deserve to be able to go out in public without fear, deserve to be able to use the bathroom without being harassed or assaulted, deserve to be able to find families and raise the next generation in peace, deserve the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, just like everyone else in this nation does. Accepting the sacrifice of the most vulnerable members of our community to fascism is accepting the sacrifice of everything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And let's go with this side of the room, please.
My name is Julie Blake. I live on Furnace Street.
Speak up, please, so we can hear you.
Sorry. Julie Blake. I live on Furnace Street. I just wanted to voice my support as well for the resolution being brought tonight. I think anything that we can do to signal and ensure that this community is safe and inclusive for everyone is very worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dr. Silas Brown from Church Street. I am here because of my wife is trans. I'm here in support of the trans sanctuary city motion that they're trying, or resolution that y'all are trying to do. I want to speak as someone who comes from the South, who has lived multiple places in the South, from Alabama to Texas, and understands that this is the most welcoming community I have ever seen, so I know you all will do the right thing and vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Rachel Brown, Church Street. I used to live outside DC, and I thought quite a lot of Virginia and their tolerance. I thought I was safe there. I moved here because that didn't prove correct, and now things have gotten worse throughout our country. And, you know, I grew up in a military family, and the idea was we protected everyone and everyone served. Give us a chance to serve our communities, and we will do wonders. But keep us in a state of fear? And what can we do? I just hope that we stand up and show the values that made me want to settle down in this city, and hopefully values stronger than where my husband came from and where I lived before I came here, because honestly, I'm scared and disappointed in this country. I never thought I'd have to feel this afraid in my life. And if someone comes after me, I'll still be the same amount of afraid, because it doesn't make a difference. One is planned, one is just something someone does.
Thank you. Mr. Malazo, did you have some? No. Okay. Anybody else on hearing the visitors? Okay.
Hi.
Oh, yes.
Hi. Miranda Smith-Hunt, Onwood Avenue. I apologize for openly weeping. You also came from Texas. We've been here for two and a half years. Mic drop. Jokingly call ourselves expats because we're raising three daughters, one of which is queer identified and one of which is non-binary. We sought the solace of Massachusetts specifically for its protections, for not only adults, but its youth, to know that our hometown, our newfound hometown, our new family openly supports us, and our livelihood matters. It matters every day, and being a room full of support and a small unit in Massachusetts to me is giving the most solace I can't even articulate in a sea and a barrage of hate. We have this. We have the majority of our voices in support. And I just want to thank the council for taking this initiative. I want to thank everyone here for standing up, for showing out, and for continuing to do it, because we have come from other areas, and that everything will be taken from you. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
16 Barth Street. I want to thank the sponsors of this resolution for your work and for your courage. I ran into one of you at a house party a year or two ago, and you said to me, one of the ways that we're effective is that we stick to our knitting. And I, to me, this is the knitting, right? When you think about folks who've come here, who care about this community, who are building businesses in this community, investing back in the community, employing people from the community, a lot of us are queer and trans. I'm not trans, but I am queer. And I frankly, when I think about a place where I want to live long-term, I never feel as seen as a human being as I do when I'm in community with queer and trans people. And I don't want to live in a place that won't stand up for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Tepper of Glen Ave in North Adams. I'm standing in support of the resolution as well. I moved here to start a farm with a friend years ago and have been so at home here and love the community. Everybody's supporting each other all the time. We really have each other's backs. And in this room, I'm hearing a lot of what I also hear at the farmer's market. As a queer-owned business, people really appreciate that public space that is welcoming, and I would love for our city to extend that to this resolution. And we can't keep supporting each other as a community in the way that we are now if we're at the same time afraid and having to fight off things that are happening at the federal level. So for our city to take that role and add a layer of protection will allow us to keep working on what we're doing here already, supporting each other without as much potential risk. So thank you for proposing this resolution.
Reed Solomon Lane, 330 Eagle Street. We moved to North Adams close to three years ago as well, from Texas, kind of on a hope and a prayer and a no shopping adventure that found us here. And my wife is a school teacher. We have three young kids. They're five, three, and a year next month. And we have found an incredible home here in North Adams. We knew that Texas wasn't safe for our family because I'm transgender, and we have just found the most incredible community here. I'm so grateful to the home we found here in North Adams, and I really encourage the city council to vote in favor of this resolution. We have brought other families to town who have moved here and bought homes as well. We have continued to tell other folks about how wonderful this community is, and this resolution will really be a testament to the values of this community, and I really look forward to seeing its passing and to North Adams being our home for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Going once. Anybody else for hearing the visitors?
Hi. I'm Nash McDonald.
Oh, hold on. You have two people at one time.
Oh.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry. I'm Nash. I live in, I live on Liberty Street. I am a trans teen. I'm 16 years old. I have lived in North Adams my whole life, but I have never been more afraid to live in Berkshire County than I have last week. The now of trans teenagers getting killed is getting closer to us. It's, the one was in New York City. My siblings are both queer. My brother is gay, and my sister is, I don't know. Something my dad got today, this morning. It's about my brother, and it says, hey, this is my brother's Brady McDonald. Apparently, we're second cousins or some shit. They sent your number in our family group chat, so I went on hearing from a lot of families that you're a fucking faggot.
Excuse me. Point of order?
Sorry.
Can we keep the language?
Sorry.
Thank you. Asking to keep it respectful.
Okay, that's what he got, though, is, what happened to you, that you had up and turned into dangerous? What kind of father raised you to allow you to be gay? Yeah. He said he should abandon, the person said he should abandon my brother. Clearly, someone that knows my name.
Go ahead, sir.
That's Robert LaFevre of North Adams. I'm here in a pose of what's going on here tonight. As we heard from the doctor that got up there and spoke, this is a safe community. He said this is the safest it's been, so why does it have to be a sanctuary? Why do we have to lift up a group of people over other people? I think all people have equality in this community. I'd like to say to the council, where's the stats to this? The LGBT community is threatened here in North Adams. I don't think that's the case. I think we're welcoming. I think this is a good place for them, but there's about, I'd say, what, 5% of the community is LGBTQ? So I think, you know, 90% are not. So why the special treatment? They should be treated like everybody else. They're, you know, welcome here. They work here. They do their stuff here. There are a few bad apples, those we have to weed out, police department, we get all of them, and stuff like that. But I think in that aspect, I think this should go to a vote in November when we vote, because there's only a small piece of our community here. A lot of people don't even know this is going on tonight, so I think it should be voted on in November when we go to vote, state elections or elections here, so we can get more people's take on it and not be overrun by, you know, just a, you know, a little bit of, you know, push this through quick in the middle of the night, and, you know, nobody will know. You know what I'm saying? I think everybody should have a say on it to see where this community stands on. And I think that's, that would be the good thing. Also, I just want to bring up what God has to say about this. God says that, you know, in the Bible, that if a man lays with a man, a woman lays with a woman, then that's.
Your time, your time has expired. Thank you. Your time has expired. You have had your two minutes. Thank you.
I'm sure it is.
Okay. One more, actually, another one. Name and address for the record, please.
Jessica Sweeney, Puddings on Road in Powell. I am no longer a resident here, but I did live here for about 16 years. I own a business here. Start, I'm getting emotional. I'm pregnant, and it's an interesting act to follow. I have been here for a very long time. I went to school here at MCLA. I own two businesses here, and of most know, I'm the executive director of Roots Teen Center, which currently serves young people, teenagers in particular. I love this community deeply. And I just wanted to take an opportunity, for those that didn't feel comfortable speaking into the mic, to raise your hand and show your support of this resolution tonight. If you feel comfortable raising your hand and saying that you are for this, please do. Please take note, councilors. There are a lot of people in this room who might not have felt comfortable sharing their voice, but they're showing their hands.
Thank you.
Hi. Lauren LaFevre, North Adams. I am here to oppose this happening, and I know that that might hurt a lot of people tonight, but I want you to know I'm not against you. I'm not. I have nothing against you guys. I have friends that are LGBTQ+, and I love each and every one of you equally. But I do think it is fair to say we should take this to a vote in order to allow people the chance to see. I mean, there is a minority here as it is, and if the vote does get passed, that's the minority. But I also agree that we are a safe place. North Adams is a safe place. We are already a sanctuary. We do not need to put sanctuary on it in order to clarify that it is. And I'm sorry you guys feel targeted. That was awful, and it should never happen to anybody, ever. But I do think that it is fair to have everybody have a voice in this, not just the people in this room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a point of reference?
Yes, counsel.
Just so everybody knows that this is a resolution. I mean, someone did speak about just going to vote amongst the people. A resolution is just a resolution. It's not an ordinance. It's not law. This is just going along with other people and how they feel. There's no, we're not putting any ordinance on the books here. This is just to clarify what a resolution is. That's all.
Okay. Before we go any further, counsel Blackmer?
I was just going to say the time to have that part of the conversation.
We will have that at that point in time. Yes. Okay. All right. Hearing the visitors, last call. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Meg Campbell. I'm on Church Street in North Adams. I'm a non-binary member of the community and relatively new. It's about my third year here. I am very pleased to say that this is the safest place that I have felt I've lived, especially in coming into and being more public about my identity as a member of the community. North Adams does feel, at large, safer than a lot of other places, especially in the U.S. right now. Prove it. Putting sanctuary in as an ordinance, I'm not sure I have all the terms right, but in as an ordinance, just clarifies that, yes, we are safe, and we are making a stance to be safe for the members of this community, not treating anyone above another. But, okay, we're under threat right now, and this is a place where we can go to feel equal and at home more than other places.
Thank you. Name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
I have, Karen. I live on East Quincy. In the 1920s, the suffragettes wore red lipstick to, while they were fighting for the right for women to vote. In the Second World War, women would wear red lipstick to indicate their resistance to the Nazis. I started wearing red lipstick recently because this country is going the wrong way. And this resolution is one small step to show that communities is where it's at. Communities can lift each other up. Communities come in all sizes. Members of the community come in all different shapes and forms, and this resolution would show that we agree, that we can be a very welcoming community to everybody.
Thank you. Okay. If no one else wishes to speak, we are going to move on with the agenda. Council Paper Number 12,459, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams. Chapter Two, Article 26, Board of Appeals, Section 2-87 and 2-92, passed to a second reading at the meeting of March 11th, 2025. Can we get a motion?
Need to adopt.
Second? Second? Motion to adopt, and we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, this is going to be a roll call vote.
Blackmore? Yes. Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nanyase?
Okay, motion passes. Counsel paper number twelve thousand four seventy, An Ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the, of North Adams. Chapter two, Article twenty-two, Section one twenty-four, regarding submission of the capital improvement plan. Counselor Oleskowitz, do you have an update for us?
So at this time, we do now, we have not met. I have three papers, I believe, on the docket, so I would like to make a motion to postpone this to the second meeting of April, so we can find a mutually agreeing time between the committee and the administration.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to postpone till the second meeting of April?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counsel paper number twelve thousand four seventy-five, An Order Authorizing the Execution of the Purchase and Sales Agreement with Mass MoCA for the Sullivan School of Property Located at One Fifty-One Kemp Avenue, further identified on Assessor's Map One Sixty-Nine, Lot One. Uh, Counselor Shade, do you have an update for us from the Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee met yesterday and has voted unanimously to recommend moving forward with the agreement.
Okay.
Need to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Counselor Shade?
Yes, thank you. I want to clarify for the public that, and we clarified this last week at the Finance Meeting, this going through does not include a design phase yet. We don't know what things are going to look like. That is going to come much later. What this allows to happen is the process of due diligence to check the landscape, to make sure that it's feasible to build on, to make sure that all environmental protections are being met and to ensure that we are in compliance with our state and federal laws with any kind of project that happens on the land. So I just want to make that very clear. Nothing is going to be built tomorrow. Construction's not going to start anytime soon. Still a long process before anything actually gets started, other than the testing pieces.
Thank you. Counselor Fitch?
Yes, I just wanted to state publicly my approval of this project. I think this is a really good deal. Like Counselor said, Counselor Shade said, there are many other checks and balances in front of this, or ahead of this, rather. And so I hope that all of our colleagues will join us in moving this forward. I realize there are some other projects on Kemp Ave that have not been voted for favorably in the past. Those were different deals, I realize. This seems to me like a really good deal, so I really hope that this works out tonight.
Counselor Blackmore?
I also want, um, I want to clarify. I know that last time I had mentioned I wasn't happy about it. I was hoping that the city would have shopped this project more and, and asked for proposals and not just published it. Um, that being said, the school closed in two thousand and nine. It's, we've had problems with vandalism, we've had problems with, uh, illegal activity up there. It's, we've had proposals that came through that, one proposal was then, came through to be a school that was then going to be, it was like a training program, but they were going to ask for nonprofit status. Then the proposal came through that wanted seventy to seventy-five units. They wanted a tax rebate or tax, uh, they didn't want to pay the high taxes on it. They wanted to only pay seven hundred to nine hundred dollars a unit. That obviously wasn't particularly feasible. Um, and it was too large for the neighborhood. Um, this project is, um, they're thinking twenty, a little more, plus twelve housing units, well under the forty that I think is feasible for that, that neighborhood. I understand that people, oh, they want the trails and they want the land and they, they, people don't, they don't want things to change. But in the meantime, I also hear people complaining that we need to have things on the tax rules and we need, we need to increase our tax base so that we don't have to increase our tax rate. And I think this is a compromise and as, we've put it out to bid and we've gotten nothing and sometimes, and again, it's been nine and five is what, sixteen years now? Fifteen years plus? I think it's time to move forward with this project. There are many steps along the way where we'll have a chance to say, hey, slow down, we don't like that. Um, due diligence will be done, things will be paid for. This is not going to be on the back generally of the taxpayers of the city of North Adams.
Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Thank you. Um, this, this proposal does three very important things for our city. One, it stops the city from having to pay for all these extra additional costs in trying to keep the building safe. Two, it adds to our housing stock. And three, those residential units then become part, once they're, once they're built, then become part of our city taxes and our residential taxes. Those are three things that we very much need in this community right now. We need more housing. We need to stop paying extra expenses for a broken building that is not being used. And we need to collect more revenue in taxes so that you don't have to pay more. I think there's a win-win-win scenario and that's why I'm in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Hey, any, uh, Counselor Bona?
Yeah, um, Counselor Blackmore touched on most of the reasons. I myself have voted on the previous two RFPs that came forward to us for reasons that she mentioned. Um, as I was last meeting, I supported this. I was ready to support it last time. Um, partially, the longer it sits there, the more I feel the need. We do need to get it off the table, looking forward to other city project, properties also come forward, uh, to get off our, off our list. But, um, I'm happy so far with what I've seen. I did not see, um, you know, we did not see the concerns from the neighborhood, which we have seen in the past, and, uh, and also much of what, I'll echo much of what Counselor Shade has said, um, so I'll be happy to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Blackmore?
I just want to clarify, at the Finance Committee meeting last night, there were several neighbors. Some of them were the same people we got letters from with the last project who were opposed to it, but we didn't get the, I don't know, thirty-some-odd letters plus people showing up. But there were neighborhood people who still would like to keep the trails and want the land and don't want a bunch of neighbors living there. But the reality is, we're not going to put another school up there and we're not going to put a couple of McMansions. This is an option that finds that balance, finds that balance. So I just wanted to let you know, because you couldn't be at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, if I may, I just want to add a couple of quick things at the end here. Uh, one of the things I was a, as some of us in this room may have attended that school in our primary school days and know that the building is very unfriendly to accessibility. It's on multiple levels. It has no elevators, from what I understand, there were never any elevators put in. I went to school in an era where there, the consideration for people with disabilities was not like it is today. And I don't see any future use as a school and I am very in favor of the project. Mass MoCA has been a welcome neighbor to this community and I believe that their record and how they do things, I think it will be a good project. Therefore, I will support this project. Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor, do you have anything to add?
No, just thank you for all of your comments tonight. Again, this is something that we've all been straddled with over the years. Um, and we, as an administration and as a community, are very excited about moving this project along. And again, as most of you have said, there's a very long road ahead for this project, but we're in a positive light and we're excited to be working with MoCA on this project. And attorney Lee Smith is online if there are any legal questions for the PNA or PNS.
Any of the counselors have any legal questions for Mr. Smith? Counselor Shade?
No legal questions, but thank you, Mr. Smith, for joining us once again.
Three times the charm.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing no further discussion, this will be a roll call vote.
Blackmore? Yes. Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nanyase?
Motion passes.
You're paying them by the hour?
Moving on, counsel paper number twelve thousand four eighty-two, Communication Number One Oh Two from Mayor Maxi, requesting time to present a proclamation in support of Transgender Visibility Day. I will file the communication without objection. Mayor Maxi?
Thank you, President Sapienza, that came up quick. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to proclaim and acknowledge Transgender Day of Visibility on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, whereas Transgender Day of Visibility observed annually on March thirty-first is a time to celebrate the resilience, contributions, and accomplishments of transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse individuals, while also raising awareness of the discrimination and challenges they face each day. Whereas the city of North Adams recognizes and values the transgender community as an integral part of society, contributing to our cultural, social, and economic fabric of our city. And whereas visibility is a powerful tool in the fight for equity and ensuring that transgender individuals feel seen, respected, and supported fosters a more inclusive and accepting community for all. Whereas North Adams is committed to promoting equity, dignity, and justice for all residents, regardless of gender, entity, or expression, and to ensure that our city remains a place where everyone can live without fear. And whereas Transgender Day of Visibility serves as an opportunity for education, dialogue, and action to affirm the rights of transgender individuals, challenge harmful stereotypes, and advocate for policies that promote their safety, well-being, and full participation in society. I therefore, Jennifer A. Maxi, Mayor of the city of North Adams, do proclaim March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as Transgender Day of Visibility within the city of North Adams, and encourage our residents to join in celebrating with our transgender community. And I'd like to present this to Nash tonight. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel paper number twelve thousand four eighty-three, A Communication from Counselor Andrew Fitch, requesting a time, requesting time for a presentation by Chris Casalio, Congressional aide for Congressman Richard E. Neal, on Ways to Leverage Our National Delegation. At this time, I will file the communication without objection. Counselor Fitch, would you like to bring this in, please?
Yes, certainly. Um, I have been speaking with Chris Casalio recently about our federal government and about the congressman that Chris works for. If you don't know Chris already, he is a wonderful addition to the community, though he lives in the hill towns, just up the hills from us. He hangs out in North Adams a lot and he contributes to this community a lot, as does his boss. And so I was just really excited about the opportunity for Chris to come here tonight and just speak about ways that we can engage with our federal delegation. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. So yes, my name's Chris Casalio. If you don't know me, I recognize most of your faces. You might have gone to school with your kids, you might have seen me in unity, I'm CLO alumni. I'm not here for that, though. I'm here for my boss, Congressman Richard Neal. So, we have heard tonight about a lot of the fear that we are facing federal finance issues, LGBTQ plus issues, a lot of social rights, rights issues. And I mean, when you think about it, the federal government, you think it happens all out in D.C. What can we do here? We are only local, we are only a city right now. What does our word actually have to, where does it stand? How do we reach out to our delegation? Hi, my name's Chris and I'm the person for you to do that. My position is the Berkshire County Community Liaison, which means that I specifically work with city councils, I work with the mayor, um, I work with the communities, I work with businesses, I work with nonprofits, I write letters of recommendations, um, I hate to talk to D.C., I organize the talking to D.C. If the congressman, if you wanted to come to a vote, I will try to make that happen. That is my role here. Something that I wanted to specifically talk to you all about right now is, um, the fears that we are facing for federal financing. Um, I know that there have been a lot of municipal agreements that we are scared about. I know that it goes more than municipal. It goes to farmers. I've heard from a lot of farmers who have gotten promised federal grants. They haven't seen that yet. It's not only farming, but that's top of my head. If you know anything about this, give me a call. We are tracking this. My boss is the minority weight ranking member of the Ways and Means Committee, which is the wallet of Congress, the wallet of our federal government. So while we may not always have a lot of sway with the president, we do have some sway with the wallet. And it's important that if you promise to get money out and it's not happening, we can keep accountability of that and we can keep it transparent. So if there are any monies that the city has promised that you haven't gotten, give me a call, send me a text, send me an email. If you know businesses that have been promised federal funds and haven't gotten them, give them my contact information, have them reach out to me. If you have any sort of concern for my boss, anything, give us a call, because while federal government resides in D.C., the federal government is made up of what? Fifty states. Fifty states are made up of many, many more towns and cities. What you are doing here is important and it's our job to be able to support you to our, to the best of our ability. So I play cards, I'll be here for a little bit after the meeting, so if you want to connect one-on-one, feel free, but I am here. My job is literally only Berkshire County. So please, use me. I'm here to be used. And Mayor Maxi is the best educator I ever had. She did not force me to just say that either. Thank you.
Counselors, do you have any questions? Counselors only at this time, please. Counselor Shade?
Yes. I just want to say thank you for taking the time to be here this evening, to make yourself available to so many people, uh, and thank you for the work that you're doing. We need our federal government to work for us and to remember that they work for us, we don't work for them.
One hundred percent.
Any other counselors? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel paper number twelve thousand four eight four, A Resolution from Counselors Andrew Fitch, Ashley Shade, Lisa Blackmore, and Deanna Morrow, that the city council in the city of North Adams reiterates its commitment to trans rights and equal protections for trans community members and declare North Adams a sanctuary city and a place of safety for trans, non-binary, and LGBTQIA+ as gender diverse people. If Counselor, uh, counselors would like to read off the resolution, have you, or would you like me to read that off?
I, I think if it's all right with you, I think we'd like to read it off.
Okay, who would like to start?
I'll kick it off, and then maybe we can take turns, if you don't mind? Because that's...
Okay, go ahead.
It's not the shortest document. Okay.
Go ahead, Counselor Shade.
Yeah, yeah, we'll read as quickly as possible, folks. One second. Okay. Resolution: Whereas the trans, non-binary, and LGBTQIA+ community in North Adams and nationally are being attacked by a relentless onslaught of executive action aimed at diminishing their agency, dignity, and respect, and whereas executive orders are being signed by the President of the United States' overreaching legislative and judicial authority on matters constitutionally protected and those rights derived from the prenup of other constitutional protections, and whereas the federal government has begun to utilize obscure legal means to justify the targeting of people arbitrarily designated as political enemies, and whereas tens of millions of dollars have been spent on advertising campaigns aimed at hate and disparaging the trans community, and whereas on January 29th, 2025, President Trump signed an executive order seeking to end gender-affirming medical treatments for children and teenagers under the age of 19, and whereas on January 29th, 2025, the U.S. Office of Personnel Management released a memo to all federal agencies ending legal recognition of trans people by replacing all forms that requested information about gender to information about sex, and...
Whereas trans immigrants, refugees, and masochies also face additional persecution due to their immigration status, and whereas the Human Rights Campaign reported in 2023 fatal violence against trans and gender diverse people disproportionately impact the BIPOC community, making up 85% of all victims identified since 2013. Almost two-thirds, 61.8%, of all victims have been black trans women. And whereas the Williams Institute at the UCLA School of Law reports that sexual minority adults have experienced homelessness in their lives, compared to 6% of cisgender straight people, amid 8% of trans adults have experienced homelessness in the last year alone, while only 3% of cisgender people did. And whereas a survey by the National Center for Transgender Equality and the National Gay and Lesbian Task Force reveals that trans people experience unemployment at twice the rate as the general population, with trans people of color impacted at a scale four times the national rate. Trans survey respondents further reported that they experienced extensive discrimination as both renters and homeowners. 19% said they had been denied a home or apartment because of their gender identity, and their homeownership rates were reported at only half the national rate. And whereas, as of the date of this resolution, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts law does not restrict access to gender-affirming health care and bans insurance exclusions for gender-affirming health care. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed Bill H. 1190 in Act relative to abusive practices to change sexual orientation and gender identity in minors in May 2019, which bans harmful and abusive conversion therapy practices. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed Chapter 127 of Act of 2022, which protects individuals seeking sanctuary from out-of-state prosecution and explicitly prohibits law enforcement agencies from knowingly making or participating in the arrests or extradition of an individual pursuant to an out-of-state arrest warrant based on another state's laws against receiving gender-affirming health care in Massachusetts. And whereas, as recognized in MGLC 12111 and a half, access to gender-affirming health care services is a right secured by the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas, as a result of the anti-trans legislation throughout our nation, many individuals and families are relocating to the states such as Massachusetts that are more accepting and offer inclusive services, and whereas healthcare professionals providing gender-affirming health care in persons seeking or receiving care or assisting another individual who is seeking or receiving care in the City of North Adams should be protected from attempts to impose criminal punishment, civil liability, administrative penalties, or professional sanctions based on the laws of other states when gender-affirming health care is lawful in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and meets standards for good professional practice. And whereas, the City of North Adams has previously affirmed a commitment to tolerance and inclusion, as recognized by the City Council of North Adams on February 18th, 2018, a resolution declaring North Adams' commitment to being a safe and inclusive community. And whereas, the North Adams City Council affirmed the listed definitions and nature of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 72 GG by resolution on January 28th, 2025, and similarly affirmed the commitment made prohibiting discrimination against residents on the basis of gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, intersex status, or HIV status. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of North Adams, that the City Council of the City of North Adams hereby reiterates its commitment to trans rights and equal protections for trans community members, and declares itself a sanctuary city and a place of safety for trans and gender diverse people. And therefore be it resolved that the City of North Adams recognizes the importance of reproductive health care and gender-affirming health care as a matter of health, privacy, and equality, and to ensure to the greatest extent permitted by laws that those rights are upheld for all residents and all visitors within the City of North Adams. And therefore be it resolved that the City Council of North Adams hereby maintains it should be the policy of the City of North Adams that no city resources, including but not limited to time spent by employees, officers, contractors, or subcontractors while on duty, or the use of city property, shall be utilized for detaining persons pursuing, seeking, or providing gender-affirming care, including gender affirmation surgery or gender hormone therapy. And therefore be it resolved, the City of North Adams hereby maintains it should be a policy of the City of North Adams that no city resources be utilized for cooperating with or providing information to any individual or out-of-state agency or department regarding the provision of gender-affirming health care or gender-affirming mental health care performed in North Adams and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And therefore be it further resolved that the City of North Adams, as a sanctuary city, will not cooperate with federal and state on policies aimed to harm trans and gender diverse people, and ensure trans and gender diverse people have access to health care, housing, education, and employment without fear or discrimination. Approved this day of March 2025.
Move to adopt?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to adopt, and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Fitch?
Yes. I submitted this, but this wasn't just me who worked on this. You know, the other counselors as well who submitted this with me. Also, I wanted to thank community member Josh Valiers for really helping to pull this together. We pulled this together in kind of record time, thanks to you, so thank you for helping with that. So this is from the community for the community. I just wanted to take a couple moments of my take on this. The LGBTQIA+ community is under attack, is being persecuted at the national level, not necessarily in North Adams. This is an opportunity for us as city leaders to say that we support the community here, we support North Adams, and we want North Adams to be welcoming and supportive of all people equally. All we have to do is say yes to this. This is very simple in my mind. I was nervous to submit this because this could be voted against, this could be a no vote tonight. I think we have to do this. Again, I think it's a really simple thing to say yes to this, and I hope everybody will.
Counselor Shade?
Thank you. First, I want to thank Counselor Fitch for bringing this forward when I couldn't, and Mr. Valiers for assisting in putting this language together, Counselors Blackmer and Morrow for co-sponsoring this. This is not about special rights. This is about equality. It is about protecting the most marginalized and vulnerable people in our community. At a time when the most vulnerable people are disparaged and attacked by their own government, it is our duty and responsibility to stand up for them and stand by civil rights of all human beings, especially the most vulnerable. And this is an affirmation of the civil rights that trans people deserve to exist, they deserve to be safe, they deserve to have access to medical care, and that no government should be in charge of deciding what's medically essential for children or adults when they seek medical care. That is not the role of government on any level. That is the role of you and your medical providers to determine what care you need. And that is under attack in this country right now. A very important point I want to bring up right now is they are currently working to change requirements in the ACA. So anybody who has health insurance through the exchange, they're taking public comments right now, so go online and comment. They want to remove those insurances from being able to cover any trans health care for any reason. We're talking about medically necessary health care that they want to arbitrarily ban and remove your insurance from being able to provide. This is dangerous. And if they can do it for trans health care, what other health care could they do it for in the future? It's not just about one group, it's about everyone. Because if they can take away the rights of one small group of people, they can take away the rest. We have to stand tall on civil rights and never, ever, ever give up a single inch when they are under attack, no matter what that means. And to the gentleman who invoked God, I just want to say, the God that I know who's always said, "Love thy neighbor, love people, share love, share kindness, take care of each other." That's the only God I know, and I hope that's the God that finds you.
Counsel Blackmer?
I have a couple things to say. One, just off the cuff, I've heard some say they don't believe we have a role in passing resolutions, that these things are out of our purview, and that we haven't done it in the past. We've done it in the past, maybe not to the extent we seem to have done recently. But I say, there seems to be a real disconnect between the way things used to be and now. And I agree. I find these to be extraordinary times, calling for extraordinary actions, this being one of them. So I'm not sure how to acknowledge someone, how acknowledging someone's humanity, civil rights, human rights, takes something away from you. Honestly, I'm tired of the white male patriarchy thinking they are somehow superior to me and pushing their val...
Will the audience please refrain?
Pushing their values, and I put "values" in quotes, on the rest of us. Again, it goes back to, it's about human rights and civil rights and humanity, and that's what we're all about. Thank you.
Counselor Shade?
Thank you. I have just a little bit more I want to say here tonight. I'm overwhelmed with the amount of people who have come out to support this. It means the world to me that you're here, and it means the world to me that I'm here to support this for you. Not everybody knows this, but a little over a week ago, I might not have been here, and I'm currently here tonight against medical advice to... There was no way I was going to miss this vote, and there was no way I was going to miss this opportunity to speak as long as my heart beat and breath was coming in, because there's nothing more important to me in this world than protecting the most marginalized people of our community. That is what we are here for. We need to take care of each other, and this is another way that we get an opportunity to take care of each other by showing up, by standing out, speaking up. I am overwhelmed with the support here, and even those who are opposed, I just say, please, understand, this is not about special privileges and special rights. It's about maintaining the access to what we have, it's about keeping what we have. We're not asking for extra, we're just asking to keep what we've already got. And I guarantee you, you wouldn't hear about trans issues if it weren't for politicians using them to spew hate and anger and fear. Because most trans people, we just want to be left alone and let them live their lives. We just want to be able to live, work, love, have our families, be a part of society. That's it. That's the trans agenda. It's not scary, it's not this big, huge thing. We're not trying to take over the world. There's not enough of us, yet. But in all seriousness, it is so important to be here tonight, and I am honored to be here with you, and I move that we vote on this. Thank you.
Counsel Morrow?
I just wanted to thank everybody for speaking tonight. It can be hard to come into a space that maybe you haven't been in before and speak to this, so thank you for doing that. I also think, of course, in a time where there's a lot of fear in the country right now, something that... Something like this resolution is so important because little by little, right, little steps lead to big actions, and that's what I feel we're trying to accomplish here. And yes, although North Adams may be a safe city already, having people be heard and seen with this resolution is so very important, and I feel like it makes people feel more seen and more safe, and also just putting more of an emphasis on how important this really is. And yeah, thank you.
Any further comments? Counselor Bona?
I've been one of those, as Counsel Blackmer said, like, I'm not a fan typically of resolutions. I find they can be weak, they don't accomplish a lot. That being said, tonight proves that that, I feel, is wrong. This resolution is obviously hitting a lot, I don't know for many of you, which when we brought resolutions here before, there might be two people in the meetings. You could say that this is a minority here, but again, most of the meetings we have, we don't get more than five people. So it's something to be said when the gallery is full, and who it might be full with, and what it means to people. As for saying this is something that should be moved to an election, we got elected, and you know, I will, I'm supporting this, and when the election comes, if the voters don't like it, then they can vote me out. But it is, we're here to represent what we feel the people want, and it's not always all the people, and sometimes we got to vote with our heart, we got to vote with our head, we got to vote with the knowledge in front of us. But as Counselor Shade said, they're looking for equal rights. This is not extra, this is basically, there's nothing here that I see that says we're giving someone special treatment. This is just saying everyone should have the equal health care, equal safety, and you know, and if there's people out there that feel that they're already getting it, watch the news, you know, again, it's not. People don't feel safe walking down the street. So again, I will support this, and I thank those who brought it forward. Again, I want to admit, I was wrong about at least this resolution, that the sense of how strong it seems to be definitely hitting part of this population, so thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shade?
Thank you. One last time. Thanks for the break. I just want to reiterate how amazing it is that so many of you... I just want to reiterate how amazing it is that so many of you took to the microphone to speak out. The one constant thing that I heard that makes my heart so happy is that so many of you feel safe here. There's nothing more important than feeling safe in your home, and I'm glad that you can call North Adams home and feel safe here. That means everything to me. And I want to reaffirm my commitment to you that as long as I'm breathing, I will do everything I can to make sure that you are safe, that every person that lives in this city is safe and feels welcome and feels like North Adams is their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Wleszkiewicz?
No.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
No.
We have six yeas, three nays.
Motion passes. No committee reports and minutes. Moving on, we have no licenses. Open forum. Yep, I'll acknowledge you in one moment. Okay, open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. And you know the process, name and address for the record.
Hi, Lillian Zawatski, 441 East Main Street, North Adams. I want to say thank you to the council for passing this resolution to make North Adams a transgender sanctuary city, I think. I appreciate Counselor Bona saying, you know, you're not usually a fan of resolutions, but seeing the public come out and how much it matters to people, that sways you, I think that's important. Just a small point, I would really have loved to hear from the counselors that opposed it, why. I think that it matters to me to know what you're thinking about this, and if it's a minor disagreement or a major disagreement, I think the public, I think we'd appreciate to know. I do appreciate the two people that spoke against the resolution, even though I disagree vehemently with what you said. I think it's, I mean, it's democracy, right? You brought your thoughts forward in a room where people didn't disagree with you. I thought that was brave, and I kind of wish I had seen some of that bravery from the counselors that opposed this without saying a word, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Michael Mawazo, Clarksburg, Massachusetts. At last Tuesday night's meeting of the Airport Commission, Doug Herrick, an unapproved participant on the Airport Commission, engaged in discussions and voted to approve a new hangar waiting list rules that directly benefited his own club, Mohawk Soaring. Currently, Mohawk Soaring's gliders occupy space in the northeast hangar free of charge, and the club has been on the waiting list for permanent placement. The newly adopted rules remove several individuals ahead of Mohawk Soaring on the list, effectively prioritizing Herrick's club over others. This is clear economic discrimination and contrary to the grant assurances that this city signs. This situation exemplifies the very issue we have been raising for the past several months of conflicts of interest and lack of oversight within the Airport Commission. The city council must take immediate action to safeguard taxpayers from this blatant misuse of power by implementing a proper vetting process for all commission appointments. Not only is this a matter of ethical governance, but it is also a legal obligation, as state law explicitly mandates, that the city council is responsible for approving all airport commission members. And in closing, I'd like to say, as Counselor Shade said, government works for us, not the other way around. Please, do your job, start actually putting in a process to vet the appointments on the Airport Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, open forum, please step up to the mic.
Jessica Sweeney, Puddingson Road in Powell. One, I would just like to thank the council tonight for adopting the resolution. It means a lot to a lot of people in this room, and just reaffirms all of the reasons why I love living here and why I love being a part of this community. Two, coming from my Roots Teen Center hat, I formally invite all of the counselors, and Mayor Maxi, you'll get an email, but I figured I would do it publicly as well. Roots is forming its next strategic plan, and we are having a community visioning session on April 9th at Murdock Hall, or Murdock Room 218 at MCLA, open to the community as well. We really want the entire community to help us shape the future of Roots and how we can serve young people. And just to add, we serve a lot of young people who identify in the queer community, and so that is particularly important to us in the future with all of the things happening in the world. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Step up to the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Lillian, I live on State Street. I want to reiterate what someone else said about this community being represented by our counselors, and like they said, it would be great if we could understand why those who, in the minority of ours, did not want this resolution to pass, and I also want to remind you that we can vote you out, as Bona said. So that is just something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Nobody else for open forum? Okay, moving on. Mayor's updates. Mayor Maxi.
Great, thank you, President Sapienza. So as we talk about safety in the community, I want to pledge to our residents, especially our community that's here tonight, that you are safe here, and we will take every measure to make sure you're safe, if that even means me breaking up a fight on Main Street during a water break. You are safe here, and we want this to be your home, and we want all residents to be safe. So with that, I'd like to just share a real quick story. It's been a long night for many of us, but last council meeting, I believe it was the 11th, we left here, and usually my normal routine is I go home and I watch the council meeting again. For that night, it was very heavy, and it was about 11:30, and I was wide awake, and for anyone who knows me, that's very strange, but I felt that I left the chamber heavy. I left the chamber frustrated. And then all of a sudden, the fire call came in on West Shaft Road, and my whole life in my world changed. And that is nothing compared to the loss that the Cantoni and LaCos family has felt. But we have another loss, and while we talk about community, and we talk about safety, and we talk about humanity, I want to share with the community that on that night, we knew that we weren't making a rescue, we knew it was going to be a recovery effort. And I couldn't be prouder of the police department, the fire department, the Clarksburg Fire Department, and especially the North Adams Ambulance Service, who performed lifesaving procedures right there on the ground on West Shaft Road. And we can squabble over the Airport Commission, we can squabble over who's going to put them in the paper first, but at the end of the day, we're community. And as we pray for the Cantoni and LaCos family, and we pray for our community members, no matter what side of the fence you sit on, let's just say, I ask that you really remember our public safety departments. They are suffering too. They are trained to save people. They are trained to keep people safe. And on that night, unfortunately, we couldn't, and that is very heavy. So when we talk about community, if you see a fireman, or a police officer, or an ambulance member, or you drive up to Clarksburg, say thank you, say we appreciate you. It was a hard night, it was a big loss to this family, but it was also a loss to our public safety community, and they're feeling it. So please remember them. Also, on a sad note, but a positive note for some, I'm sad to announce, but happy to announce, that Beverly Cooper, our city treasurer, has decided to retire. Bev started here, I think, when she was 15, 16 years old, and she's only 27, as I wink at you, you do the math. She's been here for 40-plus years. She's decided that she's going to retire at the end of the year, so we will be looking to fill that position. In addition to that, Jean Bordeaux, who has served the city in the treasurer's office for 27 years, has also decided to retire. So we are in the midst of a big transition in the treasurer tax collector's office, but I wish them all the best and healthy retirement. But I wanted to make sure I publicly notified the city council, because you know how people talk, and I'm sure you've maybe already heard it, but we will begin searching for those procedures and evaluating what we're going to do downstairs. So with that, let's just go home and hug our families, our dogs, our animals, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor's, okay, we just did that. Liaison updates and counselor updates. Do we have anybody that wishes to, any updates from the counselors? I do have something to say. I want to thank all the people that came out tonight, spoke for or against the resolution. When I look at this room, I see a group of people, all walks of life, different orientations, different people, we're all different. I have no malice against any group. I support the rights and the equality of all individuals, whether it be through healthcare, the ability to walk down the street and not feel threatened. If I were to see somebody of any type of group, or anybody that needs help, I'm not going to stop and ask who they are, I'm going to help them, because we're all human, we're all people inside. We have all the same wants, desires. When I say the Pledge of Allegiance, there's no asterisk after the word "all." It means all, and everybody. I may not agree with the resolution, but that does not mean I do not have any bad feelings against anybody in any community, any type of group, whatever classification. And I like to think that our city is very inclusive, it is very welcoming, and I want everybody to feel safe, to walk the streets of the city of North Adams like everybody else. And I do thank you for your comments. Thank you. Counsel Wleszkiewicz.
We were asked why we were no vote, and I just would like to echo Counselor Sapienza's same sentiments. I mean, we were all elected to protect, make the city safe as a whole for everybody, not just focus on one particular group at a time. And as all counselors know, I'm pretty consistent when it comes to resolutions. I've probably spoken to every one of you several times, probably Keith Bona the most, that I've never been a fan of resolutions, so I just, I think I'm usually pretty consistent, but thank you, everybody that did speak tonight, and thank you for the people that did choose to move here, because North Adams is a safe community, and I'm glad that you're here, and I'm glad that you feel safe. But my reasoning for vote wasn't a no vote against your life, in no shape or form, it was just, I'm here as an elected official to make everybody feel inclusive and safe. Thank you.
Anybody else?
President Sapienza.
Counsel Shade.
I want to just take a moment to thank all of my fellow counselors, no matter how they voted. While I disagree with some votes, I still appreciate them being willing to open up and explain why. I will just point out that the people who voted no have never had to fear the way that we have, and I think that's the takeaway. And it's just something to think about. Some people just have never had that fear, and that's okay. I wish nobody had that fear, because nobody should. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the council, moving on? City clerk updates. Clerk Leonazio, do you have anything for us tonight, please?
I do. I wanted to take this time to announce and make sure everybody is aware that nomination papers are available. You do need to come in and see me. There are packets that I've made up for people who want to take nomination papers out, the offices that are going to be on our ballot, our mayor, counselors, our North Adams School Committee, Northern Berkshire Vocational Regional School District Committee. So if you come in, the first thing I do is ensure that you are a resident and that you are a voter here in the city. I, like I said, have a packet for everybody. It includes a calendar for the election, it includes information from the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, which is very important, because anybody who is taking papers out will...
There are enough for people to see.
Yep. I have little packets. This kind of explains everything for the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, and people need to ensure that they are filling out forms. So I have the forms in here. If people have a committee, if they're raising money, it has to be reported, I have to have that on our website. This is a sample of the form that has to be filled out for money that comes in for your campaign, money that goes out. And once again, it has to be uploaded to our website on the calendar. Also, there's instructions, and I also have another form, because there's never enough forms, right? This form is if somebody is not raising any money and not spending any money on their campaign, so kind of covers everything. So when whoever comes in has any questions or anything, like I said, they need to come in and see me, and then there are the forms for the signatures, and I'll go through everything with whoever comes in. That's it.
Thank you, Clerk Leonazio. Okay, any correspondence? Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to say thank you for everybody that showed up tonight, and your voices were heard, both pro and against, and it takes a lot of courage for anybody to get up in front of that mic and speak not only to us in this room, but those of us, or those folks that may be watching through YouTube, and those folks that may be watching through the cable TV. Motion to adjourn will be in order.
Someone, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.